Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call the Wilmington Board of Selectmen meeting of Monday, June 27, 2016, to order. All members are present. At this time, I would kindly ask that we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would kindly ask Selectman Kyra to lead us in this regard.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united god, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is the transmitting of the Treasury warrants 48, 48A, 49, 49A, 50, 50A, 51, 51A, 52, and 52A. Questions, comments, or a motion, please?
I move to approve the warrants as read.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Our next item is the approval of the minutes of March 14, 2016, and May 9, 2016. Based on the composition of the board for both of those meetings, on May, March 14, we had a different composition than May 9, so I'd like to take them up separately. So, having said that, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the minutes for March 14, 2016?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 14.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Yes, I'll second it.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Okay, 3, 4, and 2 abstain?
I'll make a motion that we approve the May 9, 2016.
Okay, motion's been made. Do I have a second? Second? Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, let's move on right into our appointments. Our 7:00 appointment is with the Board of Selectmen recognition of the Wilmington Rotary. And at this time, I'd like to turn the program over to Tom Manager Hall, please.
Yes, thank you. I just want to acknowledge the efforts of the Rotary. Tonight, we have with us George Hooper and Mike Burns. George was the Rotary president when the effort was initiated to replace the sign at Rotary Park. And Mike has been the president for this most recent past year when the sign was completed. So you'll recall, for a number of years now, we've had the information signboard there on Church Street, right off of Rotary Park, and it's really been helpful for the town because whether it's town meeting, notice, or graduation, or national night out, whatever the occasion happens to be, we've been able to use that signboard to get the word out. So last year, 2015, due to the efforts of Rotary, the board, signboard was replaced. The new one, as you, I'm sure, have noticed, has the granite posts. It's a composite type of material, so it's much more durable, and it also is lit at night. So further allows us to advertise what's happening in town. The project was about a $6,500 donation on part of the Rotary. So, as you know, they've, they make a number of donations, including scholarships, as well as various other events that they have during the course of the year. So I just thought it would be appropriate to acknowledge the efforts of the Rotary Club.
Excellent. Thank you very much to both of you for being here tonight. I'm going to have my colleagues make any comments that they'd like to at this time, and then I'll make some comments at the end. And then we do have a certificate to present to you as a token of our gratitude. So I'll start to my right. If anyone would like to make a comment on my right, feel free.
Sure, thank you. Gentlemen, thank you for being here. Appreciate it. And thank you for your generosity, and specifically, this donation is much appreciated, and I think it's a nice addition to the town, so thank you very much.
I certainly echo Selectman Bendel's comments, and the Rotary Club has done yeoman's work with scholarships and throughout the town for the kids and the events that you run. Although I didn't win the trivia night, that's okay. But thank you so much for your generosity toward the town.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know it's, I know it's all been said. I just, once again, want to appreciate what the Rotary's done for the community, obviously, and the donations, and the scholarships, and stepping up to the plate relative to the sign. And I really appreciate it. It's a great organization. It truly is. Thanks.
Yeah, again, being last, I'm in a position to pretty much echo my colleagues. You guys know that there are so many organizations around Wilmington that, where there are so many volunteers in all of those organizations, and it's a testament to really the beauty and the, one of the great qualities of this town is that volunteerism spirit. And certainly, that's embodied in what Rotary is doing, and what you and this, and the organization is doing. So you lead by example. You're very visible in the community, so young people and not-so-young people see the activities that are going on, that Rotary's engaged in, and giving back to our community. So we're very, the town is certainly very grateful for the efforts of the, of the local Rotary. So thank you, guys, for that effort and for the continuing efforts. And I'll make sure you get a plug for activities that are going to happen this Thursday. Don't, don't miss out on that opportunity.
Yeah, we'll put that in. We appreciate it. Thank you very much. I mean, we're just the face that's here now. There's quite a few members that are behind us. A lot of effort goes into the fundraising. It, it's all to give back to the community. One of our mottos, our service above self, and that's one of the things that we kind of strive for. So that, that's a big, big thing that we try to do. As you mentioned, our scholarship, that's, that's a huge drive for us, too. So we're always looking for community projects or anything that, that come up, just let us know what we can help out at. Thursday night, I'll put a plug in for it. We're serving on the common. Our big dinner, we're the first one to kick off these 4th of July festivities, so come on down, purchase a ticket, grab a meal, and we'll try to cook you a decent hamburger.
Watch a movie.
Yep.
Yeah.
There's an alleged movie later, too.
Yeah, an alleged movie, yes. And I would just like to take a second here, and one of the events that we started last year was a community ice bucket challenge. Last year, with very little organization, in a very short period of time, we were able to raise over $5,000, which was every dollar donated to the Angel Fund in Wakefield, which is an organization which sponsors ALS research. We have it scheduled again this year for August 27, at 10 o'clock, at Rotary Park. I know last year that Jeff and Mike Shampoo were there and did it, and we'd like to challenge all members of the board to come down and participate, make a donation, and for that, you'd get the satisfaction of dumping a bucket of ice cold water over your head, but knowing that every dollar raised is going to a terrific, terrific cause.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. So I'd just like to echo the sentiments of the board in thanking you. Obviously, the legacy of Rotary goes for many years here within the town of Wilmington. You've partnered with the, the community as a whole, and we truly appreciate that. Certainly, you've given scholarships, as you mentioned, and have really partnered quite significantly with the Wilmington Public Schools. I know that in addition to monetary donations, you've donated equipment to the classrooms, so that's just one example of many that I could certainly highlight. So at this time, I'd like to invite you both to come forward. I do have a certificate here, and I'd like to read this before I step forward and ask you to come and receive it. It's presented to the Rotary Club of Wilmington. It's in recognition of your donation of the signboard at Rotary Park with sincere gratitude for your generosity from the town of Wilmington, and I have signed it on this 27th day of June 2016. Judith L. O'Connell, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, I'd like to move on to our next appointment with, which is with Teresa Masiallo, our Elderly Services Director, regarding an update on programs at the Bizzell Senior Center.
Hello. Good evening.
Just gonna move over here.
So, yes, hi. Good evening. So whenever you're ready. Oh, thank you so much for inviting me. As you know, sometimes we are full of surprises with our department, so we are going to continue with a few. I'd like to give you an update on our kayak event. If you remember, last time I spoke to you, we were questioning working with LL Bean, as in doing lessons at the Wakefield Lake Quanapawat. Well, we actually started last Thursday, and it was a wonderful event. We had, obviously, people were a little concerned as to being able to get in and out of the kayaks, and, I'm sorry, I feel like I just ran over here. But it went really well. There was three staff, three staff from the LL Bean, including the regional director who came, who I originally had spoken to, to make sure that this went off well, because we're the very first senior center in the state of Massachusetts that actually is doing this. So what they did was they sat at the nose of the boat, of course, it's probably the bow with the stern, excuse me, I'm not too good at that. And then they got in, and so once people got out into the lake, the whole, their whole personality changed. Everyone calmed down. Everyone really got into it. In fact, no one wanted to get back on shore. We were out in the lake probably around ninety, like 45 minutes, because before we went in, we had some training about the paddles and things. But I think the most impressive thing was, we had a woman who felt that she was physically going to be unable to, and it proved her wrong. Her confidence level got so high that she was so anxious for the next, the next one for next week, but at the same time realized it just gave her a boost of other things that she wanted to try, and before you know it, the 12 people started talking about bucket lists. So I think it was really great. So I'm really happy about that, that it got, it worked out, and it actually has opened several doors for us to be able to work with LL Bean and several other events that I hope will be coming up, and I can update you on that. But right now, I don't want the seniors to hear this, or the people that are listening, older adults, because I know they'll call me tomorrow saying, so when is it starting? Like when I mentioned it here last time, I don't know how many calls I got, when is it starting? So I'll hold off on that one. So we are very happy about that. Also, this week, just as in the town is, gets very excited about the 4th of July and all these special events we have, obviously, there are some people in the community that are unable to participate due to the fact of being homebound. And the way that we feel as a department to outreach to these people is we do a special homebound meal. What that includes is actually this time, we are having Panera. They're making a sandwich, salad, chips, the cookie, but it's then in turn delivered by a group of volunteers. This year, we're very fortunate also to be included in the volunteers, as Redding Cooperative Bank, to help deliver these meals, and then they also give a little token, that's something that's patriotic, but they do get to talk to these people. And I feel that this is a way to at least, you know, show a hand as in, you know, it's 4th of July for you, too. So we're doing that tomorrow, so you might see a few people driving around the streets getting a little lost, saying, when, where was that house? So that, we're very, very happy to be able to do. We do that three times a year, but I feel that this one is, is, means a lot in the sense of making sure that the people, again, that can't be a part of the fireworks, the carnival, and down at the common, can really feel that they are still a part of all of the events. Then also, we, Laura Pickett, who is our case manager, a lot of people don't know Laura. She is, really works behind the scenes and does a lot of the, well, the case managing, management, going out to homes and making sure that people are receiving services. So what we decided is, seeing as it's a, she is a piece of the unknown, to be able to start going out into the community and talk, she and I talk to them. So, for example, we started and we did two discussions at Deming Way, the senior housing. They have the front part of the building, and then the next day in the back. What was very, very interesting, we had five residents who do not live in Deming Way at all, who decided to come out and just to find out, because we had put it in our newsletter, we also tweeted it out, and that they decided this was a great way for them to learn about the senior center and the department and the services that were provided, which then again brought attention as to, all right, so we really need to get out more into the community, because people might feel more comfortable as to not just coming to the senior center. In saying that, Laura and I are in September going to be doing a presentation at the library. The library has offered us to be able to come to them. So one of the evenings, I think it's September 29th, I mean, 28th, but don't mark my words on that one, we will be speaking there. So you'll be seeing, I hope to be reaching out to more people in the community, sharing exactly with families what we can provide as in transportation, as in the home-delivered meals, as in when someone is discharged from the hospital, not feeling like, oh, my gosh, I think my parents are being discharged too soon, they really need rehab, but they're telling me no, and knowing the rights, the patients, for them to know their rights, those types of things. So also, I also wanted to mention some, for scholarship, this year, we had a student that we gave a scholarship to, but I think needs a little bit of special recognition. His name is Joey, Joe Tavanes, and he, the reason he got a scholarship this year was back when he was in eighth grade, he actually brought the "we" to the senior center. And there was a little discussion as to, I don't know if this is going to take off, what is this all about? Well, how many years later, he, five years later, four years later, when he's graduating high school, we have the most competitive group of people you ever want to meet when they're doing their bowling, to the point where we have the trophy having to stay in the lobby, because they want to make sure everybody sees it. So again, this started with a small, small idea, that a student thought, I'm not too sure, and his persistence and guidance and making sure that people that were limited and couldn't get out of a wheel, you know, get out of a chair, could really feel comfortable in playing this game. And so we have quite the team. So we did, we had his family over last week also to, for the "we" group to sit with them and say thank you. So that was, that was a great time, too. I do want to mention that fuel assistance, I know it seems so crazy, that here we are in June, the beginning of July, speaking of fuel assistance, but also for people that are watching, I know that they'll, will be starting to receive applications in August, and at that time, to please call the department, because we do assist in renewing the applications, but it's never too soon to start fuel applications. And in saying that, we also are still having our fan and air-conditioned drive. We do have, actually, we just assisted someone a couple of weeks back who severe congestive heart failure, I mean, I'm so sorry, COPD, and she has just had such a difficult time, didn't have any air conditioning, had no funding for it, so we were able to assist with that. So if anyone does have an air conditioner or the fans, we do get them out to the community. It's very much a needed service for, and especially as you can feel the humidity and things starting. You and I, it's easy, we can complain, oh, you know, it's hot, oh, my gosh, but these people have a very difficult time breathing, so air conditioning is very important. So those are just some of the things that I wanted to touch on today. I know time is very limited here for so many people coming today, but I didn't know if anyone had any questions or concerns, or things that they've seen that they've kind of questioned about, or kind of open it to you.
Well, first of all, thank you very much for that detailed presentation of all that's going on. I know that we've had you in periodically throughout the year, and we do that annually. I have to say, just to kind of jump to the front here, if I may, is that I had the opportunity to come by for the St. Patrick's Day, and I am so glad that I came. I know that other members of the board were there, and we collectively had a chat and said, just what a, what a, what a spirit and enthusiasm tone, and everything about that place was just magical that day, and you literally felt like you were an island. I mean, they were so enthusiastic about it, and I can't say enough. Some of the things that you brought up, I think it just highlights just the diversity and the variety of activities that you have for the seniors and older adults, as you mentioned. And I think some of the highlights that really came out to me in, in some of what you spoke about is the fact that the social-emotional piece is really becoming, you know, more and more a big part of your job, and trying to have seniors feel that, you know, their day-to-day life, you know, has purpose and meaning, and they can get out and do things and feel, you know, among the living. And I think the 4th of July piece, I'm thrilled that you're doing that, that you're bringing it home to people that can't come out and enjoy. We all think of fireworks, barbecues, and being out with people, and they're homebound, and that has to be very, very difficult for them. So I really appreciate that extra effort that you're making on behalf of our Wilmington seniors to reach out to them at home. So I just wanted to highlight that very specifically. So I don't want to take up any more time. I'd like to turn it over to my colleagues. I'll start to my left. If anyone would like to make a comment to my left.
Yeah, briefly, I was at the same St. Patrick's Day celebration that Judy just mentioned, and I echo that, that this, I didn't know what to expect, frankly, right? I'm thinking, okay, it's, we'll go and have a nice meal and communicate with some folks. It was a party. People were having a great time. There was singing, there was dancing. We, I sat at a table with one beautiful lady who was just telling jokes and just the, the life of the party. So I, I, my perspective on the entire environment and really what the services are that are going on there was changed a little bit. So kudos to your entire team for all of the work, and I know there's a lot of folks behind the scenes, and you get all the glory up here at the, at the table, but kudos to everyone there. I just, I want to just pause an extra moment to congratulate Joe Tavanes. Is that the gentleman's name? That, that's remarkable. I, what, that story kind of touched me, you know? We all have that stuff. I, I have an old "we" in the house. It's sitting there collecting dust, and it didn't even occur to me, you know? So kudos to Joe, and I think that's a very good choice to, to identify him as a, as a scholarship candidate. So congratulations on all the, all the projects you're involved in, and I look forward to participating in the kayak training in 20 or so years myself.
There you go. There we go. Twenty.
I might be there a few more years, but anyway, I just want to say you do an outstanding job, Terry, with the senior center, and for decades, the town of Wilmington's always supported the senior center. You folks do an outstanding jobs. I mean, they can have, you know, accountants show them how to do tax returns, they have health, people come in to talk about blood pressure, anything to deal with health, and it's a really great organization. I was there myself on the St. Patty's Day, and I got to tell you, the conbeef dinner was outstanding. I thought it was a little better than my wife. I even called Lou Smogli and said, you said, tell me how it was cooked. And he told me, one of the gentlemen, he donated 100 pounds, 100 pounds of potatoes, 50 pounds of carrots. I mean, it sounded, it was like good therapy, I can tell you that. But anyway, once again, you folks do an outstanding job, and I'm really glad to see one of our good members down there in the back there. So thank you for everything you do, and you guys do a fantastic job. Fantastic. Thank you.
Terry, thank you and your staff for the services that you provide the residents of Wilmington. I've been down there, as you know, a few times myself to, for the bingo and the Christmas craft fair, and most recently, the iPod for wounded veterans, where we honored many of the residents for helping out Paul Cardillo with the wounded iPods program, which was outstanding, the, the work that, that is done there at the senior center. And as for the "we," I know firsthand from my mother. She loves that competition, so it, it sounds like everything's going well there at the senior center. Thank you very much.
Eric, thanks very much. Appreciate all your efforts, continued that you do, and your staff, and all the creative ways that you and your staff continue to serve residents and a lot of our veterans as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything, Jeff?
I don't think I can top that.
Okay. I see that we have an audience. I'm going to go to the audience. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Terry, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you so much.
Have a wonderful summer. Thank you.
Thank you. You, too. That's right.
Thank you. So at this time, I'd like to move into our 7:20 appointment. We are running about six minutes or so behind, so we apologize for anyone that's here and at home. It is with Michael Morris, our town accountant, and it is regarding the borrowing for the purchase of a fire pumper and the Yentile Farm recreational facility project. Mr. Morris.
Hi.
Good evening.
Thank you. We're here to basically finish off the process of selling these bond anticipation notes. They are for $5,450,000, $4.8 million for the Yentile Farm project, and $650,000 for the fire pumper. To do so, we need to do through a few formalities here. We need a series of six votes to accomplish two things, such as the bureaucracy of the bond world. Most of them revolve around the approval of the sale and subsequent reporting requirements for these bond anticipation notes. The second thing is to change the borrowing term from five years to 12 years for the fire pumper. The fire pumper was borrowed under the chapter that allows for it, Chapter 44, Section 7, subset 9, that basically sets it at five years. It does allow for a provision to change the term to something, not to exceed its useful life. We put it at 12 years for a couple of reasons. One, it does not exceed the useful life by any stretch of the imagination, because they usually last to around 20 years or so. Secondly, we plan on doing a bond anticipation note this year, and next year, we'll renew it. And the year after that, we'll go to permanent financing, so that makes up 12 years. The fire pumper will take approximately nine months to get all the specs written up for it and the construction of it, so it's really only going to be used for about 11 years before the debt will be completely paid off. These votes are being asked to take to approve the sale of the notes, to change the time period for the retirement of debt to 12 years, to authorize the board to approve the sale, notice of sale, and final official statements, allow the town treasurer to report any significant events disclosures to the buyers. That would be something adverse to the town if that, anything like that happened. It would be very adverse to report that. Implement federal tax requirements, and to execute any further documents that are required, and I would authorize various town departments, like the treasurer, and the town clerk, and the town manager, if necessary, to authorize any further documents. So that's what brings me here.
Thank you. Jeff, do you want to make any comments and talk procedurally, how you want us to take the votes? I know there's six that need to be taken. I see this framework here.
Right. Just to compliment what Mike Morris outlined, you'll recall that we had two separate votes. One was Article 23 at the May 2, 2015 annual town meeting, which was to authorize the borrowing of $4.8 million for the Yentile project. The second vote was Article 6 at the April 30, 2016 annual town meeting, which was to authorize the borrowing of $650,000 for the pumper. So as Mike Morris indicated, these next series of votes all relate to the ability for us to issue the bond anticipation notes. And the reason for issuing bond anticipation notes is that in terms of our capital improvement program, which as you know is a five-year rolling plan for replacement of equipment, work on buildings, we anticipate that in the next couple of years, there may be some additional borrowing to be done, and so going the route of this bond anticipation note, by the time we get to that third year, we would roll additional, potentially additional borrowing into that permanent financing, and then be in a position to have a borrowing that is permanent in nature, you know, with a range of retirement dates. So what the board is being asked to do tonight is essentially authorize the issuance of these bands, which will be purchased by TD Securities, and they may or may not then resell, if you will, portions of the debt to other entities. So there's six particular votes that the board is being asked to consider, and essentially what, you have a copy in front of you of the particular votes to be taken. It would be advisable to take these up individually and just to make a motion and, and read the verbiage as presented on the vote of the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. So at this time, would anyone vote to approve, would anyone like to make a motion to vote to approve the sale of a $5,450,000, 2% general obligation bond anticipation note, otherwise known as the note of the town dated June 30, 2016, and payable June 30, 2017, to TD Securities USA LLC at par and accrued interest plus a premium of $66,490?
I'd make a motion as described by the chairman.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, on the, on the breakdown, Mike, of the, the Yentile piece and the, and the fire pumper, how, how much at the end, for the fire pumper itself, not the Yentile, but we're taking $650,000 after 12 years, is, is that, how much is it projected, are we projected to pay on that with the interest added? at the end, for the fire pumper itself, not the Yentile, but we're taking $650,000 after 12 years, is that, how much is it projected, are we projected to pay on that with the interest added?
Approximately $750,000. We don't know the interest rates, you know, because we haven't issued the permanent debt yet, and we don't have it next year's banned, but approximately, I did an estimate, came at $750,000.
Okay. And in the capital stabilization fund that our town manager mentioned, we have, how much in that? And how much did we put in at the town meeting to add to it?
We have $2.4 million, Jeff?
We put 1.5 in this past year.
And we had 500 before, plus the amount in there, which is about $300,000.
Yeah, I guess you may see where I'm going. I don't understand why we did this when we have so much money in that capitalization fund that we could have just bought this pumper right out and not have to worry about paying an extra $100,000 in interest. For me, it doesn't make much sense, but maybe...
One of the things is the interest rates were so low. Another reason we wanted to try and save some money, to put more money into the capital stabilization fund, because we do have some things potentially coming up. We can also use the capital stabilization fund to pay off debt. So, we wanted to make that account as healthy as we possibly could.
Yeah, I think the, from my perspective, when you look at the capital, the capital outline, the five-year projection, you know, in the aggregate, not that we're necessarily going to be able to afford to deal with all of these issues in the next five-year sequence, but we're talking about $30 million worth of projects. By putting, building up that capital stabilization account, when we have larger-scale projects, we will be able to use at least some of the capital to offset some of those costs.
Anything, Jeff? Okay, motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor? Unanimous. Okay. At this time, would anyone vote to approve that the maximum useful life of the departmental equipment listed below to be financed with the proceeds of the $650,000 borrowing authorized by the vote of the town passed April 30, 2016, otherwise known as Article 7, is hereby determined pursuant to general law, Chapter 44, 7, parentheses, 9, to be as follows: A fire pumper for the borrowing amount of $650,000 for the maximum useful life of 12 years. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion as described by the chairman.
Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Madam Chair, I would just point out that certainly there's, you know, at least a couple of different philosophies that you can take in terms of the amount of time to pay off these types of, in this case, a pumper. Five years is the statutory minimum. Part of the rationale here, as Mike mentioned, is paying it off at least over a good portion of the useful life. And by spreading that out, we have not only the taxpayers that are here today, so to speak, of the next few years paying into that, but the folks that will benefit from it, you know, 10 years out, 12 years out, that are also paying for a portion of this vehicle.
Okay, motion made. Have a second? All those in favor? Unanimous. Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to vote to approve that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated June 10, 2016, and a final official statement dated June 16, 2016, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer be here, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Would anyone like to make a motion to that effect?
I'll make the motion as read. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Moving on to the next one. Would anyone like to make a motion that the town treasurer and the Board of Selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a significant events disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C 2-12 in such form as may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the note for the benefit of the holders of the note from time to time? Do I have a motion?
I'd make a motion as described by the chairman.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm sorry. Mike, I know you alluded to it in your original discussion, but could you just help me understand what that is? This disclosure undertaking, what would be disclosed? Is it a hypothetical, or is it just in case?
Yeah, a combination of both.
Okay.
It could be of some... If a community, for example, had one large employer, and the employer moved out of town, and therefore made it very difficult to pay off the bonds, we would have to make notice to the bondholders.
Okay.
We don't have our nests in one basket, but it's just a...
I imagine it's a necessary component for this kind of authorization. I just wasn't sure what was implied with that. So, that's helpful. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Unanimous. Okay. Moving on to the fifth vote. Would anyone like to make a motion to vote to approve that we authorize and direct the treasurer to establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures in such form as the treasurer and bond counsel deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the notes? Do I have a motion?
Yes, sure. So moved.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Vote six. Would anyone like to make a motion to vote to approve that each member of the Board of Selectmen, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, before, on this, with the Board of Selectmen, I just threw the chair to the town manager, Mike. I just try to understand why, these documents are going to be mailed when, Mike? Tomorrow?
Yes. Pickup tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah. I'm trying to understand why we had to pre-sign these documents. I did not do that. I don't know if anybody else did. Pre-sign these documents before we took up and voting on all of them. I, you know, I would think that we would want to vote them, approve them, and then sign them. Any reason why we were asked several times to come down and pre-sign?
It was really just a, you know, more of an issue of convenience. Certainly, the board could have done it after taking the vote. There were a number of different documents to sign. As I had mentioned, I think there were a couple of members that had raised the question, in the end, if for whatever reason the board had decided not to authorize this borrowing, those documents would not have gone anywhere. Essentially, they would have just been nullified. It was really, you know, we certainly could have done it after the meeting tonight. It was more of an issue of convenience. When the school, high school, the $44 million was borrowed some years ago, a similar process was done at that time, as I understand it.
Just to check. One thing, there is also a document that needs to be signed at the end of this, that basically said this all took place, and that needs to be signed by the recording secretary of the meeting. And if for some reason the votes had been negative, she could not say that that happened, and all these documents would be not only void.
Well, no, I understand, but if someone signed it, they've already given their authority to it and given their approval on it. That's before we even had a chance to, or an opportunity to ask questions and discuss issues. That's why I don't particularly like the practice of pre-signing on things of that nature. So, it's my own personal feeling on it.
Okay, any further discussion? Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Unanimous. Okay. Anything further?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, our next appointment is with Michael Woods, our Public Works Director, regarding the future growth in the Wildwood Cemetery.
Good evening.
Good evening. First, I'd like to introduce Lorraine Church. She's our Assistant Business Manager for DPW, is in charge of the daily administration of the cemetery. So, if questions get difficult, I may need to rely on Lorraine to answer those questions. But we're here tonight to talk about the cemetery. When I first looked over in Public Works, seemed to be one of the big questions is how much time do we have left? How many burial spots do we have? How many years do we keep here? We get 10 years, 15 years, 20 years. What is the number? So, once things got organized in Public Works, and we moved forward, took the cemetery under our wing, and went through all the old records, and to determine what do we truly have, what is available, and to come up with a plan to maximize the amount of burials we can put in the space that we have allocated to this currently. Just to give you some statistics, we, sections K and N on this map, and, you'll excuse me here, there's M, L, J, they're pretty much in order here. D, sections B, A, was considered the old section. Section C, the veterans' lots, out here. The coloring, anything in the sprayed orange is already sold out. In the new lots that we've built, the pink colors have already been sold. So, here, here, you know, here is veterans' lots, and the available lots are the, unfortunately, the smaller colors here in blue in these three locations. So, what we did was we looked at 10 or 15 years of data, and to determine how many people we bury on a typical year, how those burials are accomplished, whether it's cremation or full burial, and how many veterans do we bury a year, and same sort of thing, which method they prefer. What we've come up with is we bury about 153 people per year, and we sell about 32 lots per year. Now, a lot is typically a two-grave lot. We do have single graves. In the past, there were four graves, but we haven't sold any of those since 2015, and we do not have any more to sell. Out of those burials, out of those 153 burials, 38% of them cremations. That is up 11% over 10 years prior. On the veterans, we do about, do about five burials per year. They're single-watt burials. There's no cost for those lots. We have enough lots left to do 152 full burials and 604 cremations, which gives us about 150 years left in the veterans' section. So, real no imminent problem with the veterans' section. Going back to the main section of the cemetery, going back to the 32 lots a year sold and 153 burials per year, that gives us just over 25 years worth of burials on this piece of property with what we currently have. The expansion, let's step to the side here, so I won't be in everyone's way. The expansions that we would be doing, right now, we're filling these lots and these lots here. When those are full, we will move to the lots up in here, and in those lots, we haven't decided whether they would be with standing monuments or flat monuments. To the close proximity to the veterans' section, we don't want to take away from that, so we may end up going with flat sections there, and then moving some of the other sections around where we could have standing stones. Some of the other things that we've done to increase the size of the cemetery is look at columbariums. These are granite drawers, if you will, that cremations are put in. Each drawer has its own section where two urns can be placed in them. And if we do that, we increase the years of the cemetery substantially, and I'll give you those numbers in a moment. And if we were to do that, the first locations that we would be looking at to combine, they would be starting here. This is the garage for anyone familiar with the cemetery. Plan of a row of evergreens through here, and we would start at this location, move forward through here, come back up into here, and back over across here. We've also had plans for columbariums potentially here in the veterans' lot if needed, and there was a demand where we find the veterans' lot to be stored that way. Columbariums themselves would be, so, standard columbariums would give us 864 niches, and again, each niche can contain two, so you can double that for people that could be buried. And the veterans' lot, if we were to do that, would be 144, and those would be single. The way this would work is we would purchase a columbarium that would have 32 niches, so you'd be able to bury 72 people. Those 36 are sold, we'd want to have some sort of revolving fund where we could then purchase the next one. They're about six feet wide, so you just keep moving them down through this area here and starting here. We just stop moving them down, and as they were needed, we'd put them in place. One other item that will stay on the columbariums, this is what they look like. This is one style Armani. This is how it would stand. This is with the black front. This is the same thing with a natural front. But what this here is showing is, there's a special key that opens it up at this medallion here. This medallion, we pull it open, and there's four separate niches. Then that's solid granite. This is removed, and that is where the urn is placed. When that's removed, this is what you would see. So, these three would stay in place during a burial. If someone was going here, this is the only one that would be open. The rest of them would look like, like so, but this the front would be moved off. Names and dates would be placed on the outside of the cover of the columbarium. One other way to increase the capacity, and there is somewhat of a need, not a great need that I've seen, but we've had questions for it, and we've shopped it around a bit through other communities and cemeteries, is looking at what they call scatter garden. This is where people are cremated. They're kept usually by their loved one at their home for a while. It's something that they wanted to be scattered on a beach, or maybe their home or what have you. Trouble with scattering at your home is you may not live there forever. So, a lot of cemeteries now are starting to have what they call scattering gardens. They keep it natural. Maybe put a bench in there, maybe a monument, and people can come down and... down and scatter their ashes at the cemetery. And we've chosen a location up here in this pink area where it's already freed by large evergreens, and that would be an area that we would be looking to do something like that if we find the need. This has been taken to the Cemetery Commission, and they've approved it. They like the idea of it, and we're just now in the planning stages of looking at the costs of doing this type of thing and that sort of thing.
Anything further? Well, thank you very much for being here. I'm sure that board members have questions and comments. I know that you've been very active with the Cemetery Commission and with your own team in terms of looking at this. And in preparing for tonight, we talked with Jeff and some other board members had had questions about the Wildwood Cemetery in general. How are we doing in terms of space? And, you know, the concern is that, you know, do we have enough room at Wildwood for the foreseeable future? And if we need more room, what is that going to look like? And we, as a town, have been having those discussions and continue to do so. And then, obviously, the Cemetery Commission met recently, and there were some changes in regulations there, some pricing, things of that nature, that generated some questions among some board members, so we wanted to put that on as an agenda topic as well. And then, I know, in general, people had some general inquiries about just the general maintenance plans of the cemetery. You know, there's been media stories about theft and things like that. So, we've started all discussions relative to the cemetery, and we just wanted the public to know that we have been having those discussions, and we wanted to have a public agenda item so that board members could ask questions of Michael Woods and his team, and obviously, anybody here in the audience. If you have any questions or comments, or anything that you'd like to share, certainly raise your hand, and I would intend to recognize you at this time. So, before I do that, for the audience, I'd like to turn it over to the board, see if anyone has any questions or comments, and I'll turn to my right.
Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it. Do you have one question? I just think I might have missed it. You estimate that we are at the current rate to be set for how many years? 20?
25.
25 years? Okay.
Yes, conservatively speaking, so...
Well, thank you for taking a look at this.
Yeah, I want to compliment you and the Cemetery Commission. I had the opportunity to attend that meeting, and it was a very good meeting. I know that there was a lot of rules change gone over and updated, and it seemed as if it, the rules that were adjusted made sense. There is concern of 25 years. I know that we can take a little breather saying 25 years, but that goes by pretty quickly. And I know that you've made some attempts with the abutting resident to see if they had an opportunity to sell, but they still haven't. But that is a section on the lower right-hand corner of that map that we might consider in the future. If they're not selling, there's opportunities of eminent domain in taking that for the town and possible expansion over at the side where Federal Street is.
I think in the same year, the Wildwood Cemetery that became available and made sense from the financial point of view versus how many graves we could put in there, we would look at. But certainly, that piece would be a prime piece if it became available.
Yeah, no, just, the only suggestion I would have, and I made it at that meeting, it was an 8:00 AM meeting, and I thought it was a little too early for residents to come to. It's a very important commission, and it was a very important meeting because it did involve rule changes and pricing changes. And my only suggestion was to have it, if possible, in the evening to allow more participation from the residents, make it more convenient for them to attend, because it is an important commission. And I do want to compliment you once again on your efforts and the explanation that you gave us this evening. Thank you.
Anything to my left?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Obviously, 25 years is going to be here before you know it. Has the commission ever thought of you, by any chance, Michael, ever thought about maybe, I'm not saying this is what we do, but maybe taking a road or two that would help increase our stock? Because it seems like we're running out of space, obviously. And I hope, you know, down the road, there's obviously other opportunities for us to acquire properties or other sections of the town. As a matter of fact, we might have more than one cemetery. I know we own property off Sellem Street and other scattered sites throughout the community, but what about, and I'm not saying this is what we would do, but has the commission ever considered, or yourself talking about maybe taking a road or two that would help increase our stock?
Yes, that has been looked at, and we do have informal plans to do that. If we were 10, 15 years from now, we still haven't acquired a piece of land that's suitable, that would be something that we would be doing.
Thank you. I remember many, many years ago, I had this conversation with Donald Onnesite, and talk about maybe down the road, possibility of taking, not saying taking, but maybe acquiring or whatever word you want to use relative to those streets in that area that would increase our stock. But we definitely have to look at other alternatives here in the community. We might, not only Wildwood Cemetery, there might be somewhere else in the town that we might have to consider, because it's, we're running, God's not making any more properties, so we're going to have to take a look at it.
Right. We have to do, but certainly having a close by from an O and M point of view is far more efficient. You know, with the cremations, the increase in cremations, if we go to columbariums, it's certainly going to increase our grave sites, if you will, substantially. And we could do a lot of columbariums in the roadway if we were to remove that. You know, the veterans, we're seeing 70% of them are cremated. And I would not be surprised, within the next two years, we're seeing 50% in the general populace in cremation. And, you know, I know other people maybe know a few things about this that could speak on it, but if that's the case, columbariums are certainly the way to go to increase the capacity there. It's a beautiful cemetery.
One more point. What about, you know, you would know better than I, wetlands. Has the state ever considered giving out certain waivers? I know that you can compensate down a river or another possible property down the road, and believe it or not, it works, and you could compensate compensatory service somewhere else in the community and maybe fill in some certain areas of wetlands?
There was some areas of that filled about 20 years ago, and I believe the law is that you can only do it once. So, we may have already used that, but I'd certainly check into it for, I would say, a definite amount.
I don't know if I want to get there and get really wet one day, but hey, you never know, it's going to happen, so...
Well, we do have spots where the water table is high, and that's the areas we pick for the columbariums because it's all about noise.
Thank you.
We do have other locations where there's stormwater drains, so there's piping underneath that you can't bury, and those are other locations we could do columbariums.
All right. Thank you, Michael.
So, what I heard, you know, we all had similar questions, and my questions that I had written down were about this 25-year-plus-or-minus direction. By the way, Ms. Chair, nice to meet you. Thanks for coming here tonight. So, most of us won't be probably in these seats. You may not be still working here in 25 years or even 20 years when it's time to start, you know, really making a plan and putting things in motion for the next 25, 40, 50 years, whatever. So, you know, will we have hypothetically, 10 years from now, will we be able to give our, the folks that come after us, a roadmap for, this is what we were thinking in 2021 about your plans, even though we're not here to help you do it? This is where we were going, and we hope that you'll take up, pick up the ball and run with it. Is that sort of the plan that you're building?
My optimistic plan is within five to 10 years, we will have a piece of land to expand upon that will be close by Wildwood Cemetery, so it makes sense from the O and M standpoint. But we've got to get that piece of land, and you'll be the first to know if I come up with something that's worth pursuing.
May I take down, I want to look at the columbarium thing again, if I could, please? Because the question I had is really about it, and I think the graphic or the visual helps. I'm, that's completely foreign to me. I've never seen this before, so I'm going to ask you to educate me a little bit. You talked about the medallion having a secure key type of apparatus. How secure are these? They're out in the open. It feels like it's an invitation for vandalism or whatever. And I don't know if, maybe I'm off base there, but what are the thoughts on that?
My feeling is there are no more at risk of vandalism than the stones that you have or grave. Everybody's aware, as Judy just mentioned, that we've had some issues, but thankfully, it hasn't really been malicious damage that's at that cemetery, not that it can't happen, and not that it couldn't happen here. But this is granite, and behind it is more granite. And for all that effort to get through it, you're going to end up with an urn full of ash, so who knows? It motivates people sometimes, but I think they're as secure as you can have without having security at your cemetery.
And I appreciate, and I acknowledge what you say. And if I may, Madam Chair, I see our chief of the police is in the room. Chief, have you worked, or are you familiar with this concept at all? Have you ever had interaction or experience with that, or spoken to colleagues, maybe?
Other than have seen them in the past, no, yeah.
But you don't feel that that presents any additional level of security challenge versus what we currently have?
No.
Okay. And I appreciate that. I just want to sort of hear it out loud. Again, it's new to me, but I certainly see it as an answer to some challenges, both for Wilmington as well as other folks who are dealing, wrestling with these same challenges. And they're not unattractive, so I hope that it becomes a solution we can wrap our hands around.
And I will tell you that we do get calls for them. They are in demand. Some people don't want to be buried in the ground, and it's an option.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So, once again, thank you very much for being here. While you're here, Mr. Woods, can you talk just a little bit about the general maintenance of the cemetery, the fact that police patrols do go in there, you know, periodically throughout the day? And then, if people have any specific questions as to what's allowed, what isn't allowed, where they could get, when I say what is allowed, isn't allowed in terms of, you know, dusk to dawn, you know, in terms of people shouldn't be in the cemetery, what's allowed to be planted, how does your team work about removal of items at the cemetery? I see this as an education moment for people that are here tonight and listening at home.
First and foremost, I'd say anyone that wants to know the full rules and regs, they're on our website, so they're available to download and read. Two of the things you touched on, that were actually touched on at our last commission meeting, was putting up signage, which has been done. So, there are signs now on Wildwood Street that says, "Open Dawn to Dusk." And when you go a little further, it says, "No dogs allowed," because we have had some issues with that. And now that we have a dog park, there's no reason for it. Anything that you don't believe should go on in the cemetery is, shouldn't go on there. That's actually one of the regulations, so there's no ball playing or motor scooter riding and those types of things, game playing of any sort. Be respectful of the grave sites that is in there. As far as plantings, we do not allow any plantings at all. You can bring in mementos and put them on the stone. We discourage that because if it has any value, people will take it and do. As far as flowers and that sort of thing, Public Works won't pick it up until there's truly nothing left of these flowers, and we just assume people aren't coming back, and we'll take it. Anything of value, if there's a nice ornamental basket or urn or something like that, we will keep when the people come see us, we give it to them. As far as police and how often they patrol it, that I can't answer, but there's someone in this room that can. And I do see them in there on occasion, and they're checking things out. Public Works works in that area from, somebody there from 6:00 AM till 3:00 AM, and they know when anybody comes in that place. And, you know, they keep an eye on things, but they are not police, they do not have police powers, so if somebody's at a grave and they take something off it and maybe put something back on it, they just assume it's a loved one, and they usually don't question it unless it looks suspicious, then they call, myself and Lorraine, we call the police. We do get complaints, it kind of runs in spurts, we won't hear anything for three or four months, and then we'll get two or three calls, and it's quiet for three or four months, that type of thing. We did have one woman at one of our commission meetings, I believe the second one back, that was in April, came in and expressed her dissatisfaction, I'll call it, with what she feels is an overabundance of theft and mayhem at the cemetery. And we tried to educate her that that wasn't really the case, the cemetery is no worse than any other cemetery, and really, there is minimal damage or theft that takes place there.
Any other questions or comments here at the table? Seeing that we have an audience, is there anybody here this evening that would like to speak on this agenda topic?
I'd just like to comment on something, if I may.
If you can just stay, I know who you are, of course, but can you just say your name?
So, I'm Marjorie McKenna. What I would like to say is Mr. Woods did a great job. Where he is proposing to put these columbariums is on land that otherwise could not be used for burials. So, he's utilizing land that otherwise could not be used in the cemetery to increase the amount of burials or interments of cremation that we can have. As far as the niches for cremation, they, he's absolutely right, they are in, they are in demand, they are coming into demand. And the cremation rate has risen to between 35 and 45%, and I don't foresee it going down at all. So, the way he has set this together has really increased the life of, you know, Wildwood Cemetery here in town, so I just wanted to say that. I have talked with him about it on several occasions, and he's had a lot of great ideas, and the way it's put together is really going to make some expansions that we otherwise wouldn't be able to have. So, I just wanted to say that.
Well, I appreciate you rising to share that information. You know, as a layperson sitting here, quite frankly, I'm not an expert on the evolution of this process. And unfortunately, as a person who's had many people put in Wildwood, it's always usually a grieving time to know what the needs are and what's, you know, for lack of a better term, up and coming as an appropriate means of parting with a loved one.
People could only just buy cemetery lots to go in-ground, even if they were only putting urns. And it was almost kind of a waste of space because they'd buy a two-grave lot because they'd want the upright monument, but it would literally have two urns in it. So, it was almost like a waste of space that you could use for burial purposes for those that wanted to be buried. This is an alternative that I think that people are really going to, you know, take under their wing and really accept. I think they are. They are very safe down at Bourne, Mass National Cemetery at Bourne. If there's not buried in the ground, that's all they use. And I haven't heard of any thefts. And there are a few cemeteries in this, you know, not real close, but in the surrounding area that are starting them. So, we're kind of going to be ahead of the game if they get accepted. And I think that they'll be utilized. And I think that, you know, yes, there'll be a little bit of an upfront cost at first, but they will definitely pay for themselves. So, I just wanted to say that. And the other thing is the scattering ground. The scattering ground, I used to work all over Massachusetts, and there are quite a few cemeteries that have scattering grounds. It is also another alternative. You do make revenue with the scattering ground as well, and it is a place to memorialize without buying, per se, a cemetery lot if that isn't really what you want. And then, that can then go to somebody else down the road that needs it. It will, with what he has presented today, this will definitely buy Wildwood Cemetery quite a few more years.
That's great to hear. Is there anything else, as a funeral director, that you would recommend that we look at as a town that we haven't discussed?
We did, actually, I did ask him about filling in some of the streets, like Slickman McCoy had. And I know that is an alternative down the road, but right now, I think we thought about not upsetting anybody that bought on the road at that time. And now, when you get rid of that road, now they're kind of in the middle, that, I think that was one of the concerns about that. But if it eventually has to come down, because a lot of them are double-wide street... But if it eventually has to come down, because a lot of them are double-wide streets, so even if you kind of came in one section on each side and made them single width, I think you could certainly, you know, do that. I know it's down the road, and it's in kind of his master plan. But, you know, I think there are a lot of alternatives over at Wildwood, but this is definitely, if you walked over there, and I'm sure he'd be glad to show you, what he's proposing is going on land that we could otherwise not use, so.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time.
Oh, you're welcome.
For coming here and for all that you do for so many families in town and beyond. Yes, Chief Begones.
Thank you, Chief Begones. I want to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I'd just like to give a little overview of what we do with the cemetery relative to the thefts. We do quite often get complaints. It's not to the level that, you know, we think that it's a high-crime area, but a lot of the frustrated calls that we get are from loved ones that have placed something on a family member's grave that may not be there when they return a few days or, you know, weeks later to visit their loved one again. The problem with that is we do patrols constantly, every shift does patrols, they're mandated to do patrols, they do call them in, I can provide a list of how many patrols we do do. With all of the other patrols that we have in town, honestly, we're not there all the time. And even if we were in the cemetery and we were to see somebody attending to a grave, I just think it would be not respectful for us to go up and ask them questions about why they're there and what they're doing with the items at the graves. It's very difficult for us, as it is for a cemetery worker, to engage somebody at a site and ask questions about what they're doing there and why they're doing it, and do they have the right to take that? I mean, and we would have no way of verifying, you know, a niece or a nephew with a different last name of an individual at a site either. So, you know, it's difficult for us. We do do a lot of patrols. Several years ago, we had a situation where there was a repetitive incident at a specific grave, and we did put a camera up, and we were able to catch some kids, unbeknownst to them, they just happened to be coming through, and they saw something that they thought was flashy, for whatever reason, decided to pick it up. We were able to get them to bring that back and charge them. The difficulty of that is, is that I'm not exactly sure that the folks want the police department having cameras set up, and that's one of the suggestions we've had, to, you know, put cameras for the entire cemetery. And I'm not exactly sure that's something that the town of Wilmington will look forward to, or that we could even absorb the cost of, to be able to do that. But, you know, I want to let the residents know that we are committed to, you know, the problems that are brought to our attention there. I think some of it could be, and I've spoken with John down there, and he says, you know, after a bad windstorm, there's stuff all over the place up there, and they don't really know where to put it back. So they usually take it, put it next to the garage, and they'll keep it there for a few days, but if nobody comes, then they throw it out. It's hard, because I've seen that after storms we've gone through. I personally made a point to go there after a storm so I could see it to tell people that I saw it for myself, so, you know, it's a difficult situation. I know that it's very frustrating for folks, and they're very emotional. There's a great group of folks, the Wildwood Warriors, that, you know, anytime they have an opportunity, will bring it to our attention when they believe that there's a problem going down there. And I'm as frustrated as everybody, I guess at the end of the day, not to be able to give somebody a clear answer as to what happened to something that they left there. But I can surely let the townsfolk know that we're there, we're there quite frequently, and we do the best we can with the situation. Whether it's lost, or stolen, or blown away, or misplaced, or whatever, I really don't have an answer for that.
Thank you very much for sharing all of that. I look at tonight as just, you know, educating the public on where we stand relative to Wildwood as a whole. And I think any opportunity that we have to let the public know that we're all working together with some synergy, I'm pleased to hear about the conversations that you've had with Margaret and I'm sure with other funeral directors. I think this is all for the betterment of the community, and I think what I hear is a spirit and intention to continue to try and do the very best we can for the residents of Wilmington and for people that have deceased loved ones that want to be put to rest at Wildwood. So I'm hoping that this will be the first of future discussions that we could have together, you know, as we work through. This is one of the many things that we, you know, as a town are going to have to continue to keep an eye on. So anyone else here have anything that they'd like to say? Anyone at all? Okay, hearing done. Thank you very much for being here, and Lorraine, thank you for being here as well. It's a pleasure to meet you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving into communications, please.
First, under Communications, we have a letter of resignation from Charles Boyle. He's been the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I'll just read it into the record. Dear Honorable Board, as you will recall, I recently accepted reappointment as a member of the Board of Appeals, with the understanding that I would resign upon completion of my responsibilities regarding a pending case. The pending case having been resolved, please be advised that I hereby resign from my position on the Board of Appeals effective on this date. Thank you again for allowing me to serve the town in this capacity. Signed, Charles E. Boyle, dated June 24, 2016.
Madam Chair, may I interject at this point?
Yes.
Just, I don't know what the protocol will be for you and/or for the board, but obviously Mr. Boyle has served in this capacity, or served on this board for, God, I don't know, 20-something years, and has been a tremendous volunteer and contributor to the town of Wilmington. And, you know, I'm hoping, I don't know if there's a protocol that we could or should follow to recognize his efforts, but I certainly would advocate that we take something like that up at some future date, whether we invite Mr. Boyle here, or certainly get him a letter of, or certificate of accomplishment. But I leave that in your hands, but I just wanted to make sure that it didn't fly by.
Thank you for bringing that up, and certainly Jeff and I would certainly be willing to talk about that, and I think what you're saying is absolutely appropriate. So, thank you.
Great.
Madam Chair, do we have to make a motion to accept this resignation? Do you know how the procedure works?
I don't think it's necessary to accept it, per se.
If we didn't accept it, we'd just have to continue.
Next, under Correspondence, is a memorandum from me just outlining a proposed process for filling the vacancy. As I'll note here, based upon discussions with Chairman O'Connell, the plan for consideration of applicants for the open seat on the Zoning Board of Appeals is to schedule a special meeting of the Board of Selectmen for 7:00 p.m. on Monday, July 25, to meet with interested applicants. Each interview should take not more than 15 minutes. If board members are available on this date, candidates would be invited to meet with the selectman at a time certain. Each candidate will be given up to five minutes to offer comments about themselves and explain their interests and qualifications to serve on the Board of Appeals. Members of the Board of Selectmen would have up to 10 minutes to ask questions of each candidate. The candidates' comments and questions from the board are expected to be specifically related to highlighting the information that will assist the selectman in making a determination as to the candidate to fill the unexpired term of Charles Boyle. Upon completion of the interviews, the board will have the opportunity to engage in deliberation as it deems appropriate before voting to appoint a resident to the Board of Appeals. So this was simply a suggested approach for dealing with the vacancy. I know there's been some, certainly interest in filling this position as soon as possible. As it turns out, in conversations with Mr. Boyle, he had consulted with counsel after the pending case that he referred to, and it was recommended by counsel that he not submit his resignation until that particular decision had been filed with the town clerk. So as a consequence, that was why his decision, his letter was submitted and dated the 25th of June. I didn't want, I didn't think it would be appropriate to pursue a process until the resignation was submitted, so this is certainly subject to discussion.
You know, to add to that, if I may, just to kind of give a little bit of a backdrop, and certainly if anyone has any questions or comments, feel free to speak up, most certainly, is that to Jeff's point, you know, everything he said is absolutely true. The request to do a special meeting on July 25 is, as you know, we were originally going to meet on July 11, and I had kindly asked if we could switch the date to July 18. And knowing, and having that conversation, that Mr. McCoy was not going to be present, I did not want to take up these votes without him being here so that we would have the full complement of the board, so you'd have the right to be a voting member. So that's why we talked about having a special meeting on July 25, so I'd be also looking to see if anyone had a specific conflict with that date. In addition, to be quite frank, in my estimation, we have not had this many candidates come forward for a position like this, and I don't recall having appointed anybody that's new to the Board of Appeals since I've been on. So there really isn't any formal process or procedure, so this was a suggested way. And quite frankly, I can speak for myself in saying that some of the members that have submitted, I don't know them at all. So I'm having a difficult time, as a sitting member of this board, making a decision amongst six or seven candidates when I don't know half of them. So I thought this would be a public setting to invite people voluntarily, they're not mandatory, they don't have to appear, they can let their submission stand for what they're submitting if they choose, but this would give an open, transparent, public meeting, that they would have the opportunity to speak to this board about their qualifications. So this would be the time to voice any suggestions, questions, concerns, issues. I leave it for discussion.
Let's see, Madam Chair, given, over the several years I've been on the board, I didn't see these many folks apply for a position, and I think this would be a wonderful time to, I would say, a little meet and greet with some of these individuals, and that we could ask questions, so I think this is a good idea for us to do that, and to find out, you know, where they stand, and, you know, relative to the community, and, you know, I'm sure other members would have maybe better questions that I could ask of these individuals coming, so I think a nice little meet and greet would be a great idea.
So I just want to also accentuate the point that we would be meeting and greeting, but we would also be deliberating the same night. So just so people know, that it would not be a second meeting. So I would just kindly ask that in coming to July 25, that you would be prepared to act on the evening's information and what you have up to this point.
May I ask, this sounds very similar to the process that we implemented for the Finance Committee appointments last year, and I suspect you followed that, a similar recipe, where any new candidates were invited to a sort of an open session. I commend it, and I welcome it. Does it, if we were to agree that this was a process that we were going to follow, it doesn't preclude any one of us from reaching out and making contact with any of the applicants to do, to have a one-on-one conversation, does it? Would you have a sense about that?
The only reason why, I don't feel compelled to suggest that, just because of the open meeting law. And I thought it would just make sense to bring people in and have it a public meeting. So, you know, I can't tell you who you can or can't call, but, you know, I'm not going to be the person promoting that.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, because until you came to us, or until this was in our packet, that I had the list of applicants, I'm going, I'm going to have to reach out and get to know all these people, which I wasn't averse to, but that was, you know, we haven't had to go through that exercise. So this really kind of solved that problem, but you're right, I certainly don't want to inadvertently step into an open meeting law snafu. So I will abide by and look forward to the opportunity to get to know these folks.
Did you have anything that you wanted to add?
I was just going to add that the, I believe the meeting in August, the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting in August is August 13. So, you know, to the extent that the board was able to meet on the 25 and render a decision, that would be, that individual would be able to be sworn in and take their seat, so to speak, for the August meeting.
That was the goal, because we're not meeting until the 15th as a board, so that was the reason why for the extra meeting.
Madam Chair, I'm in support of this as well. I think it's a nice public process.
It's August 10, I was thinking 13. It's August 10, yeah.
Yeah, and any of it would still be subject to the August 15 meeting, so we would, that's the reason for the July 25. Go ahead, sorry, Greg.
No, no problem. I think it's a nice way to do a public process. They all have very impressive resumes, so it would be very difficult just to choose one. I think it'd be nice to have them come in and let the residents see it as well.
Anyone have any schedule conflicts with July 25? Okay, all right, thank you.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question?
Yes.
On the process when you're going to vote, I just want to think, scenario by the board, if Selectman Kyra, or Vandal, or McCoy, or Shumpu all have four different people that they nominate, how's that process going to eliminate one, or two, or three of them until you get down to the final process? Because that's a question of concern I have. That's something we need to think about. And I don't know any of the individuals myself, and I'm glad you're doing it this way, but that's my concern. If Mr. McCoy nominates someone and Mr. Kyra does, then how does that elimination finally happen to get to the person that the board finally approves?
Well, the procedure, I'd have to walk through it, I mean...
Because in years past, when there's been multiple people for different, various boards, they've had, they used to have a process on how that was done, and they actually outlined it before the voting started, so I just need to put a rabbit around my head how the board's going to do that in this meeting and any future meeting.
If I could say, no, thank you. I remember years and years ago, sitting on the board, you just take rounds of votes, and then whenever you have a majority, so, like you said, Mr. Loud, so maybe we took three rounds of votes, but on the fourth round, there were three people that decide on one individual, as long as there's three members of this board that supports that individual, that person would be the next member of the Board of Appeals.
Thank you, thank you.
I mean, I would suspect that people would get with a majority at some point, I mean, it's happened. I mean, if everyone here wanted to be chairman of the Board of Selectmen, that could potentially happen too. So you're correct, I mean, to the extent that we can communicate a procedure upfront so people know in the audience how we're going to go about it, but Michael is right. I mean, I would suspect that someone would concede their particular and maybe get to a majority and essentially switch their vote.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Madam Chair, if I may, through you, to the manager, I would assume that we'll reach out to these folks and that they'll be afforded the opportunity to come. You know, I don't want to predict the future, but maybe one of them may say that they don't want to do that, and that may eliminate, I noticed that on the applications, several of them had applied for several different boards, and so perhaps if they are aware of this scenario, they might eliminate themselves the process. I don't know, but I'm just saying that I would imagine we're going to reach out to them and explain to them what we intend to do.
Yes, that would be the plan. The correspondents would go out to each individual, inviting them to attend a meeting on the 25.
And I, from my standpoint, I would see this as a voluntary thing. You know, some people may not be available that night, and/or they may not feel comfortable coming in and doing that. And from my standpoint, you know, for me personally, that would necessarily disqualify that person from my, in my mind, because not everybody may want to do that. So just want to make sure I'm letting my thoughts be known.
And it is July, and it's the likelihood that at least someone's going to be traveling or...
Maybe on vacation, but, you know, I think we're giving an opportunity, I think is what's, what I'm getting at here, for us to get to know them, to make an informed decision.
And it may be, just if I could offer this, that if someone is not able to make the meeting of the 25th, or is not so inclined, they may use that opportunity to provide something in writing that further describes their interest or background.
Okay, I think we've covered it. Thank you.
Next is correspondence from Baker Botts, which is the attorney representing New England Trans Rail. They have requested from the Surface Transportation Board a waiver of the pre-filing notice requirements. This is a requirement as part of the process for them to gear up for their petition for a transloading facility. Normally, there's a six-month period prior to the commencement of the environmental review where interested parties are notified. They're seeking to have that waived. In part, they note here, "We believe a waiver is appropriate in this case because the current updated petition relates to refinements to the lines in transloading facilities that were first described in a petition filed over 10 years ago." ago and that have been the subject of a partial environmental review." They also note further on here that previously, the waiver that, they were granted a waiver back in November 2005, so that has gone to the Surface Transportation Board. Next is correspondence from Town Council, Dan Deutsch from Town Council's office, and I spoke about this issue. Clearly, we're not in favor of this waiver, and Council expresses that in his correspondence, noting amongst other things that, that the, in spite of what New England Trans Rail's representative has suggested, the petition that is due to be considered is not the same as the original one. There was originally, under the first proposal, consideration being given to a solid waste type of operation, and then it was revised from there. There's also been what I guess I would characterize as some inaccuracies in their prior correspondence or prior description of their proposal. So Council, on the town's behalf, makes the case that this waiver ought not to be granted. Next is correspondence from me, just outlining, essentially similar to the previous correspondence, noting that the intent, really, at least in part, of this pre-filing notice is to give interested parties, the town and other parties that have been interested in this issue, an opportunity to get prepared, if you will, follow the Surface Transportation Board website, and when a filing does occur, begin to get geared up for that. So certainly, in my estimation, appropriate that the waiver not be granted.
Sheriff, if I may, I feel like I've lost a little bit of touch with this. Do we know what the response of STB will be to either NET's request or our opposition to it? What the timelines are associated with that, or is it...
It's not clear. I think it's just a matter of wait, wait and see.
Okay, thank you. That I was afraid of.
Next is memorandum from me, just outlining the recent rating that we had, as you recall, as part of our effort to engage in borrowing. We went through a rating process with Standard and Poor's. We were seeking to get the gold medal, if you will, of AAA. You know, we're at AA+, which in my estimation is a silver medal. Certainly, it's always good if you can get gold. I think silver is still good, but the point being, in terms of communicating this, is that the issues that Standard and Poor's identified in the report, that they, the summary that they provided to us, were really fourfold. One, concern over the town's other post-employment benefits liability, which I've been talking about. I suspect to probably the board may be getting a little bit tired of that at this point, but it's clearly an issue that has registered with them, as well as our pension liability. Those were two issues of concern, and then two issues that are, to some measure, out of the town's control. One being the town's overall income, personal income levels as compared to other communities that have been rated AAA, and then all the overall property values in Wilmington as compared to other AAA-rated communities. So we'll continue on, and, you know, to the extent that there is a borrowing that happens in the future, we'll continue to pursue the AAA. Next is correspondence from Mike Morris with regard to the votes that the board has taken this evening. I think that's been previously covered. Correspondence from me, just as a reminder about the meeting on the 29th of June at the Middle School Auditorium, 6:30 PM. This is the Facilities Master Plan Committee meeting. We've been meeting now since December. The Facilities Master Plan Committee has developed some alternatives in terms of the types of approaches to be considered for both the schools as well as general government. We want to present that to, even though all of our meetings have been public meetings, we want to seek out interest from not only the public, but also members of the various boards and committees and commissions and other department personnel that may want to offer comment. Certainly, we're looking for any feedback from folks, so I would encourage you to attend the meeting on the 29th.
This says that June, Thursday, 29th, it's not Wednesday.
It is Wednesday, yes, so Wednesday.
So Jeff, if I may, just ask, you know, I know that this board's been invited, I know the school committee, I believe, has been invited as well. Question for you is, are you looking for us to just be in general attendance, and how do you expect the night to go? Is it going to be a presentation with Q and A at the end? Is that how, do you know?
It will be a presentation. Steve Cecil with the Cecil Herrmann Group, he's an architect and has been, he and one of the representatives have been the point people for us. He will, Steve will be making a presentation. He'll talk about essentially how we got to the point where we are at. He'll talk about the methodology that has been used to develop these alternatives, and then he'll go specifically into the options that are being considered on the general government side, and then once that presentation is complete, he'll open it up for questions. He'll then shift gears to the education piece and talk about the alternatives on the education side, and then open it up for comment.
Okay, thank you.
We have an email. This was directed to me, and I guess ultimately the Board of Selectmen it is, from Mark Nelson. I'll just read it into the record regarding the Board of Appeals vacancy. "I respectfully request that my name be added to the five residents wishing to serve on the Board of Appeals. I've been a resident of the Town of Wilmington for 61 years, very familiar with the land law and the duties of both the Zoning Board of Appeals as well as Official MAP Board of Appeals." In land court case, and he cites a particular case here, Justice Sheila, in her order dated June 3, 2013, that I served to represent the Board of Appeals in this matter, as case that I successfully prevailed in a dismissal. So he's expressing interest in the position. Then finally, under correspondence, just an update from EPA. This is with regard to the Industrial Plex Superfund Site. This is in Woburn, and it goes into some measure of detail about what is happening in that location. It became a superfund site in 83. There was a record of decision initially on the first phase in 1986, later a record of decision for Phase Two in 2006, and this outline describes the work that's being done. It notes, there are a couple of dates for meetings. Actually, one of them is happening this evening in Woburn City Hall, EPA Public Information Meeting, and then EPA Neighborhood Open House, 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM, July 19th, outside at the Cranberry Bog Conservation Area off Washington Circle in Woburn.
Okay, moving on to Board to Consider Items.
First item under Board to Consider. You'll recall at the April Town Meeting, there was a piece of property that the board, that the Town Meeting authorized to sell. It was deemed surplus. The property is actually on Fifth Street. Fifth Street is off of Nichols Street, near Reno Ave. It's a very small piece of property. It is about 1,275 square feet, and this was submitted by petition. So just looking for the board's authorization to go forward and go through the request for proposal process. The starting bid, based upon the value that was assigned to this property, would be $4,500. So I'd be looking for a vote.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the sale of town-owned land located on Fifth Street, MAP 39, parcel 94, as voted at the annual Town Meeting of April 30th, 2016?
I'd make a motion as described by the Town Manager.
Motion made, do you have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Next is a request, Board to Consider. This request comes from Angela Kyra and Maureen Gilman, to have a neighborhood block party to be located from 16 Stroud Avenue through the cul-de-sac. This is on Saturday, July 23rd, 2016, from noon to 10:00 PM, with a rain date of Saturday, August 6th. I've reviewed the request. Essentially, they're proposing to have the block party from a portion of Stroud Ave back to this cul-de-sac area. The individuals who have submitted this request have been in touch with the neighbors and I believe been able to reach all but a couple as of the date of this request. They may have since reached out to those, been in touch with those other individuals, but I don't see any issue with the request. Just to read into the record the requests that came in, it's directed to the chairman. "The residents of Stroud Avenue respectfully request the Board of Selectmen approval for a summer block party on Saturday, July 23rd, from noon to 10:00 PM, with a rain date of Saturday, August 6th. Pending your approval, we hope to turn the inaugural event into an annual summer gathering. It is our intention to do everything we must to ensure that the safety of the neighbors. Having said that, we do not want to close the entrance to Stroud Avenue. However, we would like your permission to block entry beyond 16 Stroud Avenue. This arrangement would allow folks to park their vehicles away from the festivities and travel in and out of the neighborhood without interfering with the block party. We very much appreciate your consideration and eagerly await your decision. Please let us know if there are any additional, if there is any additional information you need from Stroud Avenue residents. Again, we're happy to do whatever is needed to make this a fun, memorable, and safe experience for all involved. Thank you in advance for your time and support. We look forward to hearing from you. Signed, respectfully submitted Angela Kyra and Maureen Gilman, both living on Stroud Ave."
Okay. Any questions, comments, or a motion to grant this request?
I'd move to grant the request.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Our next Board to Consider is a request to authorize an easement. This would be a utility easement related to the Yentile Farm recreational property. Just notes submitted by Paul Looney, who is here this evening, Town Engineer. Please find enclosed an easement agreement between the town, the grantor, and the owner of Nine Cross Street and Reading Municipal Light, for your review and signature. Two utility poles exist in the Cross Street right-of-way that will conflict with the parallel parking spaces proposed for the new Yentile Farm recreational facility. The poles will be relocated to the property of Nine Cross Street, referred to in the enclosures. As such, Reading Municipal Light requires an easement to operate and maintain this portion of the infrastructure. So this was contemplated back when we had the design. There was some discussion in terms of the location of the poles, and in the end, we deemed this would be an appropriate location for these utility poles. I don't know if you want to ask any questions of Paul, or...
Okay, just wanted to recognize that Paul Looney is here in the audience. Thank you for being here, Paul. Does anyone on the board have any questions? I'm not surprised to see this request. I'm sure you're not either, Kevin.
Yeah, I'm...
So, please. Yes.
So Paul, thank you very much. I don't have a problem with the request at all, just so that I can get a sense of the geography here. And you've given us a couple of maps. On the first of it, I guess it's the plan of land, I don't know how to refer to it otherwise, but it shows easement A and easement B. So is that the final location of where they will be, or is that...
That's correct.
Okay. The other one shows relocate UP. I presume that's utility pole by others. So is Reading Light going to actually physically move the poles to the position that the engineering plans indicate?
Yeah, the first step in that process is to have this easement agreement executed that starts the work order with Reading Municipal Light.
Agreed.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Would anyone like to make a motion to grant this request?
Sure.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Paul, while you're here, I just wanted to say thank you very much for everything that you're doing for the project, for those that are here tonight and listening at home. Paul is taking a very lead role with our clerk of the works and seeing this project firsthand, so I really appreciate that. And I just wanted to let you know that I appreciate you doing the video that you did with WCTV that's just been released, which is basically an update and you're on-site in construction hard hats and going through the project, and there's trucks actually moving around behind you and actually doing work. And if people have gone by Nine Cross Street in any direction, it's really starting to get into the real deal now.
It's really exciting. It's an exciting time. The turf field's starting to take shape. Foundations are in for the concession stand pavilion and the maintenance shed. Say about 95% of the earth moving activity is complete, which is a part project. A lot of the heavy lifting from the air will start transitioning into the vertical construction and some of the finishing touches.
Great. So not to spot you with this, but just to kind of plant the seed with you and Jeff, is that maybe we could talk about a site visit for the Yentile Committee at some point soon, so we don't miss anything exciting that might be worth seeing, and maybe get some proposed dates through Jeff at your convenience to suggest maybe what would be a good time for us to visit. And then we would obviously have an update for the board at some point as appropriate. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to public comments. Would anyone like to make a public comment? Seeing none? Hearing none. Moving on to new business and committee reports, and I will start to my right.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just very quickly, I just want to thank in advance the members of the volunteers of the Fort July Committee who are going to put on a terrific event later on this week. I'm looking forward to attending, and it looks like they're going to have some good weather, so I appreciate it. It's been a long road for them, and I really appreciate all the volunteerism, and looking forward to a really exciting event for all the residents.
I agree with Selectman Bendel, and I'm sure everybody will have a fun time this year. Just one note of interest, I guess, so to speak. When I was driving back home on Woburn Street, I noticed the lacrosse field, and there's a scoreboard over there that the youth lacrosse and the Sons of Italy had paid somewhere near about $1,800 to put up. And I'm noticing that you can barely see it now, because it's been overgrown with vines and shrubbery, and I just don't want it to get ruined. It's probably about a six-year-old scoreboard, and I don't want those vines to get inside the mechanism. I know that the high school uses it, I hope the youth lacrosse uses it as well, but if maybe the DPW can rip those down and clean it up a little bit, just so that it doesn't get...
This is on Woburn Street?
Yeah, the Woburn Street School.
Okay.
That lacrosse scoreboard back there, you can probably see just a little bit of the blue left on it.
Okay. We'll take care of it.
Okay.
Anything else, Kevin?
No.
Okay. Anything to my left?
Yeah, just real quick, Madam Chair. Just Jeff, at the intersection at Glen Road, the synchronization, is the synchronization, is that complete, or are they still tweaking that a little bit, or...
It's largely complete. I was talking to Mike Woods today. There's a meeting that they're... that they're, the parties are looking to schedule between Mass DOT and Green International, the traffic engineer, I think they're either shooting for later this week, or next week, to make some final adjustments, but my expectation is, once that meeting takes place, and whatever adjustments come out of that, I think it's largely gonna be settled, although that's not to say that if adjustments need to happen in the future, you know, similar to what periodically will happen at 38 and 62, if there's something that gets particularly out of whack, that may be a bad example, because that intersection never seems to flow the way it was designed, but Mike Woods does have a contact at Mass DOT, and would be able to put a call in if needed going forward.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just needed to ask that, because it's no question, I remember Mr. Shampoo saying, "It's a lot safer," but I know that's a little bit of the buzz around town, people are waiting, so, obviously, we'll just tweak it as it goes along, just try to do the best we can, that's all.
Yeah, I would make, make this comment, and, and I was not quite honestly aware of this until I had the conversation with Mike Woods, but the, the signals at Glen and Middlesex, and Middlesex and Wildwood are, their demand, at least the timing, to some measure, is demand-based, so, for example, if you're heading from, say, North Wilmington towards 38 on Middlesex, and the traffic begins to stack up at the intersection with Glen, the, there's some kind of, I guess, a sensor or something in the mechanism at the traffic light, that will detect this high demand, so it will allow the green light to stay on a little bit longer, and I'm not sure exactly how much of additional time it grants, but of course, when that happens, then it impacts the other signals, so they're in the red mode, or yellow mode, for a longer period of time, and then, once the demand ceases, so to speak, it goes back to its regular mode, so, you know, I, for example, I was at the intersection, I think it was a week or two ago, trying to get out from Glen and take a right onto Middlesex, and the truck in front of me went, and then immediately the light was, I guess, yellow, and it struck me that it was quick, but, you know, I guess the, again, this demand sensor process must have detected that there was more traffic coming through on Middlesex, and, and made that adjustment, so, you know, I, I think sometimes when people see what would appear to be a quick signal, it may be because one of the other intersections is, has a greater demand, and the traffic lights are trying to pick that up.
You don't have that special button like we all have?
No, I don't.
All right, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You know, the intersection, it's not, it's not perfect, but it's a heck of a lot better, and that's what I hang my hat on, I think it's, it's a better place to be. My only comments are about Fourth of July, as my colleague said, you know, a lot of pain and anguish went into getting us to this point, and we're just two days away, three days away from the beginning of another celebration where it belongs, at Wilmington Town Common, and I just really want to encourage the residents, and any, any guests that you bring, to be respectful of the process, recognizing that, you know, this is a, a new environment, it's a little bit of a new setting, and that, you know, some, some folks put their reputations on the line a little bit, to say that this was worthwhile, and that we're gonna be okay on this site, so I just really hope that everyone will be on their best behavior, have a remarkably good time, everyone be safe, and then we'll be back next year and years after, so, happy independence to everybody.
Thank you, I just wanted to wish everyone a happy and safe Fourth of July as well, so moving on to important dates, thank you.
Under important dates, going from, through October 9th, every Sunday, for the next several weeks, the farmer's market, Town Common, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, June 29th, as I mentioned earlier, is the Facilities Master Plan Meeting, 6:30 at the middle school auditorium, June 3rd through July, I'm sorry, June 30th through July 3rd, Fourth of July festivities, and you can obtain information about the specifics there at their website, www.funonthefourth.com, or their phone number, 978-657-8081, July 2nd is the Family Day and Spectacular Fireworks on the Town Common, July 6th is a brush drop-off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, July 6th is a concert on the Common, Howie and Jackie is the name of the group, 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM, July 9th is another brush drop-off Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, July 10th, the Hardin Tavern Open House, 6:00 PM to, 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM, July 13th, another concert on the Common, the group is Ball in the House, 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM, next Board of Selectmen's meeting is July 18th, here at 7:00 PM, July 20th, another concert on the Common, the group is Jimmy and the Jesters, 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM, and then, as agreed to earlier, a special meeting of the Board of Selectmen on the 25th, here at 7:00 PM.
Okay, awesome, okay, at this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, and all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you, good night.